Meeting, a call to order, 7:05. If I could start off with item one, 1.1, the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to hand this over to Councilmember Jones.
Good evening and welcome, residents and neighbors and friends. Today, we're going to be led in our flag salute by Daisy Troop 70731. It's a community-based troop of first graders ages six through seven who attend both public, private, and charter schools in Altadena and Pasadena community. This is their second year as a troop and they are being led by Yvette Rivera, Dot Keller, and Sarah Lozlo.
Oh, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, good job. And just to tell you a little something, they don't say the flag salute anymore in schools, so they had to learn the flag salute to do it today, yeah, because they don't say it. Welcome. Good job. Bye-bye.
I'd like a little round of applause for the wonderful daisies. Thank you so much for gracing us with your presence this evening. If anybody else has any groups, especially some of the children groups around town that's interested in doing our Pledge of Allegiance in the future, please either contact me or corresponding secretary and we can make sure we get some put on the agenda as soon as possible. Okay, moving on to roll call, item 1.2. Councilmember Jones.
Good evening. Please answer after I call your name. Okuri Izimi.
Present.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Excused.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Aaron Cheetah.
Here.
Gloria Sanica.
Here.
Antonio Bersera.
Here.
Reginald Wilkins.
He said he will be late this evening, but he will be present.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
Diane Markison.
Here.
Nick Santangelo.
Excused.
Excused. Okay, so we have a quorum with 13.
Okay, did I mention that Victoria Knapp was excused as well?
Yes, and Dr. Thomas is excused.
And Dr. Thomas, okay.
Okay, I had her down already. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item 1.3, approval of the October the 15th meeting agenda. Councilmember Sutherland.
The Executive Committee met on October the 7th and approved the agenda as presented. Copies are on the piano in the back. Since then, there have been the following requests for changes. Number 3.3, Altadena Fire will be presented by Assistant Fire Chief Mackey. And item 7.3 will be presented by Terry Andrus from the Board of Trustees of the Library. And we'll see if we have any, but under number 6, add 6.1.1 for public comment under this special presentation.
So that'll be item 6.2?
6.1.1.
1.1.
Are there any other corrections or additions?
I'd like to add a quick announcement from 4601.
4601. That'll be 8.1 will be 4601.
Does anyone know, Councilmember Jones, do you know if Doug Collyfield will be doing presentation for the council?
No, he asked me or you to do it.
Will you do that?
Sure.
Okay, so Councilmember Jones doing the Chamber of Commerce report.
Any more? In that case, I move that the agenda be approved as amended. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved.
Okay, moving on to item 2, Officers' Report. We're going to start with the Chairman's report. I'm just going to mention if there's anyone in the audience that doesn't or isn't aware, we do have public comments, you can address the council. It is limited to two minutes, you can address any topic you wish. We're not allowed to respond to public comments, but if you bring up a topic that pertains to a particular census tract, hang around afterwards and the census tract representative can meet with you and discuss any situation you have regarding that. The public comment cards are on the back of the piano. If you'd like to fill one out, you can hand it to the end of the council member and pass it down this way. Oh, and when you do fill out a comment card for public comments, please make sure you put contact information on there so you can be reached. Quite oftentimes, if no one puts the information, then they forget and then we can't reach you or answer any questions after the fact. So, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that last month, the council voted in support of the LA County Fire Department, short of funds and short of, there's aging equipment, aging out equipment, and Councilmember Simmons offered to write the letter on behalf of the council to send it to the county. It has been completed, it's in the process of being sent right now, so just an update on that one. The Executive Committee has talked about several things in this coming year, and one of the things is we want to make sure that we can promote as much outreach to the community as possible. And one of the ways to do that is census tract reps holding either an open house or a town hall or something, or any event within their census tract. So what we proposed is that oftentimes on those events is, you know, just a little bit of funding to help support the event in the way of, you know, for refreshments, so there's been a case for funding for a room. Our funding comes purely from the public, as our treasurer will mention in a little bit, from the tin can that goes around, and that those funds, what we've decided from the Executive Committee is that, and I'd like to put a vote out to the council right now, is that we offer $50 per census tract per year for each census tract to submit a proposal for a town hall or an event that promotes outreach within their census tract. As long as the funds are available and as long as a second council member within that census tracts agrees, then that funds will be made available to you. So I'd like to take a vote on that. So I offer, is there any questions or comments before I do that? No?
Is there a formal process, like an application or anything expected if we were, or is it just a verbal exchange?
No, in writing, whatever form of writing that is, and again, with approval of the second council member, and to be appropriate for that census tract and for an outreach.
Yeah, just so that there's a track.
So in writing, yeah. So, can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Anyone, any abstentions? So moved. Another topic that came up was equitable time within the agenda. I would just like to reiterate that a while back, it was, the agenda was put into a rotating motion, items four on, currently it's general public comments this time, and each month that is rotated. So therefore, each particular report moves up on the agenda each month. That was something that was implemented a while ago. Some people weren't aware of that, that that's why it changes a little bit each month, but I'm just bringing that to attention right now. So that's item four on gets rotated. And one of the things we were also looking at, in the times when it is needed and is required, as happened two meetings ago, that maybe we can allot a given amount of time towards the beginning of the schedule, maybe five minutes allocated to public comments for certain circumstances that are kind of beyond our control, and I'd like to open up for discussion, but offline to think about this with the council. Okay? And then one last thing is next month will be the last meeting before our holiday party in December, which Councilmember Okori kind of implemented a couple of years ago. It's been a huge success, we want to see it a huge success again this year, so I will be looking for volunteers. Councilmember Markison doesn't have to look away when I say that, to head maybe the Holidays' Party Committee to make it happen again this year, and to do outreach to the community and find out if there's any groups or organizations that want to take part. We've had groups come and sing, we've had wonderful participation, and we want to live up to that expectation again this year. So, please consider it and get back to me. And now, as I am done, I'm going to move on to item 2.2, Vice Chair, Councilmember Sutherland.
Well, this can be very quick because our chairman already spoke to the items that I talk about. That's correct, he did. It was how you speak public comment and what to do and that kind of thing. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 2.3, Recording Secretary, Councilmember Jones.
Fellow council members, the minutes of September 17, 2019 were emailed to you for your review with a request for additions and corrections. The minutes now include all the additions and corrections that I received. I make a motion to accept the minutes of September 17, 2019 in final form with the added additions and corrections. And I want to thank everybody that sent me them, it really makes my time worth it when I get them, because when I get nothing, I know there's a problem, there's some things in there that need to be corrected, so, thank you. So, I made a motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? One abstention, Councilmember Izimi. Moving on, item 2.4, Treasurer's Report, Jennifer Lee. Councilmember Lee.
The balance in the checking account is $2,233.09. So we're in very good standing, and we rely on donations, and I have the can here that I'm going to pass around, and we'd like to circle it through and then back again. Thank you very much. So I wanted to just add that these funds keep up the website, it keeps up with the snacks, we paid for the map with that, with all the photos, so we keep up monthly expenses, and then there are donations that are in the account that are earmarked for special things according to people who have given it to us.
And the now $50.
And now the $50 per census tract.
Yes, and so this money will pay for that too, the money that's in the account, that comes from the can.
The annual budget? Okay, moving on. Item 2.5, Corresponding Secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Thank you. I don't have anything in particular to say, other than if anybody has events they would like on the calendar, so please send them to me. I know Councilmember Lee has a PUSD event coming up on the 17th, so I'll get that up on the website, and so if anybody wants to share anything, please do. Thank you.
I just want to actually mention one thing, that the budget for the council is released, the report at the end of the year, and I believe it's attached to the July minutes, so that's where the end of the reports will be. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, Public Safety, item 3.1, Officer Cooper. Welcome back.
In disguise.
Yeah.
No uniform today. This is my uniform of the day. Okay, so for, actually for August, we had 13 property damage-only collisions, we had two with some form of injury, we had three property damage-only collision, or property damage-only hit-and-runs, and there were four DUI arrests that were made. For the month of September, we had 13 property damage-only again, we had six with some form of injury, we had six hit-and-run property damage-only, and we had three DUI arrests. That's all I've got for the stats for August and September. One other thing I did want to bring up, which is really for next month's stats, but unfortunately today on Woodbury Road, we did have a fatality collision. The basic facts of that collision are, at about 12:38 PM, we had a Ford SUV with a female driver that was traveling eastbound on Woodbury Road west of Fisk Avenue. For unknown reasons, they're still under investigation, the vehicle drifted to the right and the driver struck a parked car. That caused the vehicle to overturn and slide into the westbound lane as a vehicle was traveling westbound on Woodbury Road. The two vehicles collided head-on and the driver was pronounced deceased on scene. There were two children in that vehicle that were transported as precautionary, and then the four parties in the other vehicle were also transported for precautionary reasons. So, it's unfortunate, but still under investigation, we're trying to find out what happened. So, and that's all I have unless anybody's got anything for me.
Any questions from the council?
Can you say where Woodbury and Woodbury?
It was Woodbury, just west of Lake. Fisk is a small street right there, just west of Lake Avenue. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Cooper. Okay, moving on, item 3.2, the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Marjorie Jacobs.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and fellow Altadena council members. I want to begin with a few announcements before I get into the crime stats. Altadena Sheriff's Station and the Crescent Valley Sheriff's Station had the tip-a-cop this past week at the Hillside Cafe. We did a great job in bringing in $1,500 in tips that goes directly to the Special Olympics athletes. We also have 12 community members that have enrolled in our Citizens Academy that's ongoing, and they finished their third week, and they learned about active shooter precautionaries and some things from Lieutenant Conchoa last night. The Altadena Sheriff's Station Baker-to-Vegas team is having a pancake breakfast fundraiser this Saturday from 8 o'clock to 10:30 at the Grocery Outlet parking lot, and this event is sponsored by the Altadena Rotary Club. Very thrilled about that. I also have some tickets available, and I have the flyers in the back of the room. There has been a $20,000 reward that's been offered for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the tragic murder of our four-year-old Salvador Espronza on July 5, 2016. I sent you all a copy of this, so you can send it out to your census tract community members. So overall, our Part 1 crimes for the month of September have climbed to 13%, mostly due to aggravated assaults and larcenies, which include theft, ground theft, petty theft, and theft from unlocked vehicles. That's still our big trouble area. We had one robbery strongarm that occurred during this period on the 2,300 block of Lake Avenue. There was three suspects that flagged down a victim stating they ran out of gas, asking for money. One suspect, the victim let him come into his car and drive with him to a bank, while the two other suspects followed behind, and you know how that goes. Suspect one asked him to drain basically everything in his account, he took out $360 in cash, gave it to him, and they drove away. So, that was that. So aggravated assaults, again, last month it was at six, this month it's at six. Three of the incidents occurred at our group homes, or the Focus Academy, involving the juveniles, and there was a total of six people that were arrested, two juveniles that were cited, and four staff members at the group homes that were assaulted by the kids. So that's getting a little out of control, and we're working together with the group homes, with Department of Children's Services, probation department, we're going to get a group together, a task force, and we're going to try to figure out what we can do as a group to address this issue. We had no aggravated assaults resulting from domestic violence, and burglary, residential burglaries increased from three to seven, and entry was made into these residents from either unlocked garage doors, open sliding doors, smashed sliding doors, even a large doggie door. That's how the suspects got into the house. Like I mentioned earlier, our larceny, ground thefts, and petty thefts have increased. Three of these were ground thefts from unlocked vehicles, in other words, values over $950 were taken from an unlocked vehicle, whatever the merchandise was, was jewelry, or money, or anything of that nature. And the remaining larceny crimes, petty theft crimes are basically petty theft from Rite Aid, or you name it, it's, they're minor in value, but they're still increasing the thefts nonetheless. Larceny of vehicles, vehicle burglaries went from 11 to 13, and two of these were at the Eaton Canyon Nature Center, one was at the 24-Hour Fitness, and two were at Cheney We had five grand theft vehicles stolen, four were recovered in the town of Altadena, so we still have one outstanding. And basically, our total Part 1 crimes decreased from 51 to 50, and we're still asking the public to help us with locking your vehicles, putting your valuable items away, not bringing them, pull off the side of the road somewhere, put them in the trunk, and then drive to your destination so they don't see you do that, especially at the gyms, so that's what we're looking for, looking for bags that look like they have, you know, high-dollar volumes, values in there. That's basically my report. Did you have any questions?
Any questions in the council? Councilmember Sutherland.
We seem to have, in our census tract, 4611, things come in bunches. I won't ask you to give me the numbers now, but if I email you, and there'll be five or there'll be six, or there'll be just a bunch, and I'm just, I want to see if I can get the addresses to find out if we've, if they make any sense.
Sure.
Because the following month, there'll be nothing, and then there'll be bunches again, so I, thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question. I also noticed in Census Track 4602, we had a couple of spikes in high instances during the summer, I think it was many car theft, or farm car theft. I'm wondering if the cooler weather or has anything to do with less people using the trails, whether that's associated with sort of activities, because it seems to be clustered around certain months.
It's very possible.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 3.3, Public Safety Report, Altadena Fire, with the Assistant Fire Chief Mackey.
Chair, Council, good evening. I'd like to present to you the activity report for September. So we had a total of 382 responses, we had seven fires, 320 medical calls, 12 service calls, one hazmat call, six hazardous condition calls, and 36 good and tin calls. Of the 382 responses, 32 were EMS, out of the 320, I'm sorry, 320 patients were seen, 232 were transported, 89 of them were transported with paramedics, 143 with basic EMT. So, page two, reviewing some of the fires here. So, on Sunny Oaks Circle, we did have a little fire in a bathroom, didn't sustain any damage at all. We also had a fire on Ventura power line, another one, another tree fire, pole fire, so you can see those, it looks like in some of the windy days. The one I take a look at here is the brush fire in Loma Alta. So, it was about five acres, and we had four there, but it was actually about five acres. It was entirely in the forest, so we did work, we did unify our command posts with the forest, so we do work in conjunction with them, and we do meet regularly just to make sure that we, everybody knows each other, so when we arrive on scene, we have a familiar face. So, the fire did not affect any of the, any parts of Altadena, however, we were working with the sheriffs, in the event that we need to evacuate, we would have done so. The next fire was the dryer fire on Loma Alta Drive, so you can see the damage there. Once again, I don't know the cause of that, but in my experience, when you don't clean your dryer vent, sometimes that lint gets caught up and eventually you may have a fire, so just, as a safety precaution, just clean your vents out of your dryer, and also take the bottom piece underneath and clean up underneath the dryer. So, below you can see the other hazardous condition calls, hazard calls, and we had a total of 12 traffic collisions. That's the end of the report, I just wanted to update the council on the status of the Saddle Ridge Fire. I know it's nowhere near here, but just to give you an idea, that was red flag weather. We did have a few areas within the county that were under the power safety power shut-off. So, they had a total, the fire started at 9:00 PM, so winds were gusts of about 50 miles an hour, 30 to 50 miles an hour. We burned a total of 8,391 acres. Right now, the fire is about, close to 50% contained. We had 77 structures that were damaged, that's damage from either smoke or slightly blistering, and we had a total of 17 that were destroyed. We did sustain three injuries, two minors and one moderate injury to one of the firefighters, and one civilian fatality, which was sort of related to the fire, but this person had a, went into cardiac arrest, so. That, that's the end of that report, just want to let you know that when we have these power safety shut-offs, just make sure that you have some type of notification device, a radio, that you can listen to the radio in the event that there is going to be any alerts of wildfire or major incidents going on, that'd be a good idea to have, and hopefully your radios, I mean your cell phones, you're able to receive service, that way you can get some type of news, news bullet that comes out, so. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Simmons?
Just a quick comment. The response to the low fire was absolutely impressive. I happened to be down just south of there, you know, when it started, and it was, it was looking like an air war, and it was prosecuted quickly.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, that was Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon, and I was sitting at home, just like most of you, watching football, right? You know? Well, I was, but anyway, I'd noticed the, I got the alert, and I drove up there myself, so I was a part of the early command, so, thank you.
That's it. Any more questions? Thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving on, item number four, General Public Comments.
You can stand at the podium.
I'm just going to let you know, if you're going to take the effort to come and do public comments, when you stand at the podium, it is on record, so your public comments will be on record by doing so.
Great. Well, thank you for having us.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. I live in Altadena, and I believe it's tract 4603, oh one. And my comment, Captain Mackey had a great lead-in for my comment, is my concern is that we do not have an emergency alert system specific to Altadena. And with a lot of Altadena bordering Angeles National Forest, we're at high risk. And while we do have the LA County Alert System in place, and the Fire Department also made us aware of an application called, or a phone app, called Pulse Point, that is applicable only to districts, and in that district, there are six cities, Altadena being one of them. So we do not have anything specific to Altadena. So when we sign up for all these alerts, we're getting all these alerts that aren't applicable, and so you tend to ignore them after a while, when you get so many. So, I guess my concern is, or my request, is that the council consider implementing an alert system that's specific to Altadena, similar to what Pasadena, neighboring Pasadena and La Cuenca have. I'm sorry, my first time.
Are we just looking at what census tract you?
That's right.
She said 40, she said 46.
Oh, the two of you, yes, okay. Yes.
Can you write on the comment card?
And so, again, the fire, the recent fire up in the mountains, the response to that was amazing, so, you know, we are very thankful to the emergency response crew, but it was being in the dark, not knowing the status of it, and if we needed to evacuate or what, so it just, it would just be really great if we could have something in place specific to our community.
Thank you. Will you have your council representative reach out to you?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay. Granny.
Granny.
So, long time ago, I got ticked off because the community reports are always last. You put the public safety reports, and I asked if they could be, like, you're alternating from four, you're going around and around. Why can't you alternate the community reports? Because normally, when we have more people, they want to know what's happening in the community, so I think if you could put them up at the top, maybe once every two months, and let them talk, by the time you get down to the parks and the library, there's nobody here. So if there's something really happening, they don't know about it. So I would like, again, to ask that instead of it being basically the next to the last item, that since it's our community, and we like to know what's going on, other than Fire Police and Highway Patrol, that you consider putting them above number four occasionally. I've asked that before, by the way.
Thank you, we were.
Can I give an answer? Even though, I'm not answering you, but I just thought I would mention that if nothing else changes, the community reports would be right, next month would be right after public safety. Because they, because they automatically will roll up.
I understand that, but why don't you change your number three to above the public comment?
Oh, I didn't understand what the rest, okay. I'll put that in the, in the hopper for a question.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments? That's it, moving on. Okay, we're going to go to item number five for the committee reports, number 5.1, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markison.
We did not have, the Land Use Committee did not meet in October, we had no items to review. We will be meeting in November, we have a couple of presentations that will be happening. I will be out of state, and Pat has agreed to chair the meeting on, in November, so please know that we will have a meeting in November, we have a couple of items to look at. Thank you, Pat. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on, item 5.2, Safe Streets Committee, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. So, just to report, we will be meeting here, we're going to have our Safe Streets Committee meeting, discussing plans for 2020, as well, safe routes to schools, and some mapping, and a little strategy session, so we'll be meeting here, 6:00 PM, the Community Center, on next Tuesday, 10:22, from 6:00 to 7:30, so please join us if you're concerned about traffic safety, mobility, safe routes to schools. And that's it. Hope to see you guys.
Item, moving on, item 5.3, Education Committee, Councilmember Lee.
So you all received my email, I think. I don't think I have to read it, I think you all remember. This is about Franklin Elementary, as one of the elementary schools that was closed by the school board. And in the email I sent to you, I discussed.
The post hook hasn't closed yet, right?
What?
It's not, it's not actually closed yet.
Franklin Elementary is slated to be closed at the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year, along with Jefferson and Roosevelt. I've been listening to a lot of community members talk, and I also believe, and the Education Committee believes, that we should be able to go before the school board, and to talk to them about how people in our community are reacting to this, and for our voices to be heard on this issue, because this is PUSD property, and they don't know what they're going to be doing with it after it closes. So, I consider it to be the Franklin Campus after 2021, and there are many ideas out there in the community. I'm going to be talking with NBBA on Saturday about their thoughts, and I would like to have a vote, I'd like to make a motion for a vote, so that the Education Committee can go before the school board, either at the beginning of November for the school board meeting, or in the beginning of December. They're obviously very busy right now, it may be December, to tell them, after we talk to the people in the community, some of the ideas that we have. I feel that our presence needs to be seen and heard at the school board meeting, and this is a tremendous shock to a lot of people, and it's tremendously important every time a public school in a community is closed. And.
So moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to special presentations, item number six, 6.1, the Altadena Town Council Outreach, Councilmember Sutherland.
This time, you didn't take all of my.
No, this time I didn't.
You're not going to go exam over that? No, I thought I would, because this presentation is mainly for the community, because most of the council members know what I'm going to be talking about, maybe not in this context, but we have been discussing it back and forth for some time. Although, I will ask council members if they've got any, any questions, additions, or comments after I've finished. For some time, we have been talking about what can we do to make the council better, but I say "we," I'm talking about we, the council members, we, the executive committee, we, members of the community, that discussion goes on, and we keep very, we often talk about it, and then we often don't actually get some things done. I have, to the council members, I've said, I equate this something like, like losing weight. If you really want to lose weight, you don't keep it quiet. If you tell somebody, then you will be, be forced to actually lose the weight. So I think if we say, this is what we are going to do, as far as outreach is concerned, we're actually putting ourselves out there and saying, we are going to do this, and, you know, the community can hold us, hope, well, yes, we're going to do it anyway, so the community can hold us responsible for it. The first thing that we're doing, you've heard about it earlier, it's the idea that each census tract will have some money every year to do outreach, direct outreach in their community. It's not a large amount, but it's something, and the idea is you get out there and make yourself known. The, I stole a phrase from Mayor Pete Buttigieg, when someone asked him why he spends so much time talking to people who might not even vote for him, why does he do that? And he said, because you have to find people where they are. And that's what we have to do as council members, because the people are out there in our census tracts, and that's where we have to go out to find them, which is the reason that the outreach becomes so important. So, the council members will have this small amount every, every year to reach out to their census tracts. Secondly, regarding our council meetings, there are a lot of organizations in Altadena, and we'd like to give as many of them as possible some time on our agenda to talk about their groups, what they're doing, upcoming events, not all at one time, please, thank you very much, but we'd like to get, to put together a list of these organizations, and representatives that contact people, so that we can organize a roster of, of groups, and then rotate them on a regular basis, so that we can have also some new people coming to speak to our meetings. So that would be the purpose. Anybody who knows and wants to help putting together the list, and now I'm asking the council members, you know, we welcome your, your assistance in getting the list put together. And once we find out how many organizations would be interested in this, then we can set up some sort of a rotating, a rotating list, so we can have some fresh faces at our council meetings. And third, although this is not outreach as such, we as a group are working on some guidelines for our presentations that come from somebody besides another council member, so that, we would like the presentations that we have every month be very meaningful for the community, to be interesting for them. We'll put some guidelines on them, some timeline guidelines, we'll make sure. Unfortunately, there have been instances in the past where maybe we didn't get enough information about what the presentation was going to be, and all of a sudden, it turned into something we really weren't expecting. But so, we're going to do a much better job of putting the presentations together and finding out exactly what it's going to be about, which will save everybody an awful lot of time. And we hope that all of this is going to be helpful, and we will have some more people in the audience than we do tonight. How about that? We're going to try, Granny. Any questions or comments from my fellow council members?
I just want to mention that the criteria for up and coming presentations actually was contained in an email I sent out just before the meeting. You're welcome to go through the email and see what that is, and if you have any ideas or changes, or if you like it, please respond, and then we know what, what we're starting with in that criteria is, is on the right track.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right. Good, thank you.
Okay. You had, you requested public comments.
But we don't have any.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item seven, which is the Altadena Community Reports. Just before we start those reports, I'm just going to make a comment here, what Councilmember Sutherland was saying, is that we did hear that it's the same groups, even as valid as they are, making the same community reports, and other people were mentioning where there are other groups, so we'd like to, that, that's the whole purpose, is rotating that out to hear more than the same voices that we hear every month. Okay. So, part of the Altadena Community Reports, we're going to start off with 7.1, which is the Altadena Department of Parks and Rec, Sam Estrada, is he here?
He probably doesn't think he's going to be on for another hour.
I know, right? We're doing good for time today.
Don't chill up, and we'll be done.
Item 7.2, Chamber of Commerce, it's no longer Doug Cauliflower, it's going to be Councilmember Jones.
Okay, Chamber. The Chamber has several upcoming events, one's tomorrow with Chris Holden at the Altadena Country Club, it's at 8:00 AM in the morning, everybody's invited, and it's, if you're a member of the Chamber, it's free, it's $10, and that includes the breakfast that they'll have there. So, and there'll also be a person from the county who is going to speak on small business loans by the county, so that's tomorrow. And then next week, October 24th, there's a premier mixer and ribbon cutting at Eden Canyon Villas. I think that's a new retirement home, at 2518 Geisha, Gensha Avenue?
Ganisha.
Ganisha? Okay, Ganisha Avenue in Altadena. So that's on the 24th.
Sorry, what was the number again?
So that's that. Also, right now, it's opened up for Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year, the applications are online, or you can pick them up here at the center, and it's important that we recognize who we think should get that, and put those applications in. And they will be recognized at the end of the year, and then there's a dinner in February at the Country Club. One other thing is, Chamber's looking for directors, they have two openings for Board of Directors, so they're looking for good people to come and serve on the Chamber Board, so it's a fun board. That's it.
Any questions?
When are the Citizen and Business of the Year, when are the applications due?
They're due November 11th.
Thank you.
They're due November 11th.
And you said the application's on the piano, correct?
Yeah, they're there.
So they're right there, they're on the piano as well. And you can get them online. I just have a couple of comments with that. One is, in the past, I don't know if it's happening right now, but if you do go to one of the events, the Power Breakfast or the Ribbon Cutting, and you happen to join at that event, there is a discount, I believe, of 10% joining fee, which would probably cover the cost of entrance. Is that correct?
Exactly. That's correct. That's correct. And you can be a member, just as a citizen, you can be a member.
An individualized.
Yeah, as individual, you can, you don't have to have a business, or you can have a small business, or 501(c).
The second thing I want to note, I did see an email going around earlier today, that the Power Breakfast tomorrow morning, there does happen to be filming happening in that area.
Yeah.
So if you're going, consider parking, get there early, and make sure you can find a parking space.
Parking and member parking.
That's what they said, parking and member.
Parking and member parking.
And the member parking?
Parking and member parking.
Okay.
In the member. Which is, which is, which is east of the Country Club.
Oh, I know what you're saying, between the golf course and the, and the.
Correct.
Yes, on the lower level.
Right. And the event's on the lower level, is what Craig said.
Okay.
So.
In the restaurant, ah.
Yeah.
So if everybody heard that, if you're going to the event tomorrow for the Power Breakfast, the upper parking lot is going to be full with filming trucks, so pop in the, park in the members' parking, which is between the golf course and the other, other, upper level, off of Mendocino.
And that might be a good place to address what you were speaking about, the emergency response, I mean, to Chris Holden, there's state funds for that, so that might be a good place to speak to him about that.
If you, if we have a Assembly Member right there, you can actually get a one-on-one conversation.
Yeah, you can have one-on-one and ask him.
Remember, remember that, remember that we have Supervisor Barker, who is our mayor, if you will, so, just, because we're unincorporated LA County, not a city, so, she would need to.
Cheer.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Back to the Chamber, are there flyers?
Yeah, the flyer's been circulating a while.
Is there a PDF?
I can send you the PDF.
Okay.
I'll send them to you.
The Facebook page is not totally up to date, so I guess, finding it.
Too late for tomorrow's breakfast.
Yeah, too late for tomorrow's.
For the ribbon cutting.
The other one.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can't find.
And the Citizen and Business of the Year, we can promote as well. Also, too, on the Business of the Year, I just want to, it used to be internal, because it is a Chamber event, so it was an internal nominations environment, but this year, it's being offered to the community to nominate any business you wish, so that's something that's new, so in case anyone wasn't sure. Okay, moving on, item 7.3, Altadena Library, Terry Anderson?
Anders.
Anders, Anderson, Anders.
R-U-S.
Good evening. Just a few things from the library. The big news for us is that we've hired a new permanent director for the library. That happened at our last meeting. Her name is Nikki Winslow. She comes from the Glendale City Library System, where she is currently in charge of the Cultural and Arts Center there. She's had 15 years administrative experience with libraries, a graduate of University of Las Vegas, Nevada, Nevada, Las Vegas, and she got her master's degree in library science, information science, at North Texas University. So she's very well credentialed, she's a terrific candidate. We had a nationwide search to do this, interviewed several people, and in our mind, she was by far the best. So she's not here tonight because she hasn't officially started. She'll start on the 4th of November. She is currently the Chair of the California Library Association Conference, which is a big deal, that's happening in Pasadena by chance this year, so a lot of us will be going. And as soon as that wraps up, then she'll be transitioning over to us. And this is a good time for me, as the President of the Board, to thank Cindy Cleary for being our interim director for all these months, and she did an outstanding job for us, so we wish her well going forward, but you won't see her name on the, on the agenda for the town council anymore. Couple of other announcements, just in terms of things that are happening at the library. There will be a town hall meeting on Monday, the 4th of November, from 6:30 to 8:00. That would be a great time, if you can come, to meet Nikki. That'll be her first public event there. And this meeting will be used to give sort of final feedback on our strategic plan, which has been underway for several months now. There's been a lot of work put into this. We're nearing the end. We're gonna have this final meeting to wrap up comments and so on, and then get that published on our website. I'm sorry? It's gonna be November the 4th, from 6:30 to 8:00, at the main library branch. Also, the Friends of the Library are hosting a book pitch party, which sounds like a lot of fun, on Saturday, November the 2nd, to celebrate their 60th anniversary as a support organization for the library, which is really impressive. And that will go, I've got it here, from 6:30 to 9:30. You pitch a favorite book in two minutes to a panel of judges to win a prize.
You know, no, don't judge, we changed it.
Oh, they change it?
Everybody gets a prize.
I'm sorry, oh, there, Rick, it's, okay, there you go. So show up for that. Guaranteed prize, it sounds like. And then also, we're adding, this, this is an interesting one, because we tried to expand our Wi-Fi mobile hotspot program, where you can check them out. We're adding another 10 to our sort of fleet of hotspots, and that's been a popular addition. So I wanted to make that announcement as well. Any questions?
Good job, Granny, you had to keep it straight.
Right, there will be some, some food vendors there at the, at the event.
Thank you. I, I just wanna also thank all the council members that were able to come and have a conversation about the strategic planning at the council member event. So there were several council members showed up, so I'd like to say thank you for them too, and...
Yeah, I, I would like to say thanks for that as well, and it does seem to me that in recent months, there's been, not improved, but a more vigorous relationship between the library and council members and some of the events that we put on. So I feel a real, a real synergy there, and it's not unnoticed at the board level. Just wanted to let you know.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Census Tract Report, 8.1 for Census Tract 4602. Forty-six oh one?
Forty-six oh one.
Councilmember...
Okay, this is just kind of a fun announcement, that on the Saturday, the 26th of October, that's not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00, the Arroyos and Foothills Conservancy, along with the Friends of Rubio Canyon, are putting on a, an event to go up and explore some of Rubio Canyon. They'll meet up on Loma Alta, that I'll, we're gonna put the, the Facebook announcement up on the, on our town council website. Basically, it's gonna be a hike up Rubio Canyon with Mel Lynch, who knows the history up there very well, and talking about both the history of the canyon from, from the days of the Mount Lo railway, as well as the Camp Huntington days, and then also to, to open up some of the newly improved stretches of trail up there. So it'll be a, it's a fairly rugged area, three to four mile hike, 9:00 to noon on the 26th.
Yep.
Can you put it up on our website?
Yeah.
Soon?
It's probably already, already on the way.
Good.
All right. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, so Mr. Estrada was expecting a later time, so he's on his way, but he hasn't said when, so shall I tell him to go home?
Well...
I do have the flyers.
The next item on the agenda is adjournment, so would you like to make an announcement for him, in case he comes through the door?
Yeah, I'll do my best, he sent me a bunch of stuff. So there is an exciting Farnsworth Park after-school program, Monday through Friday. So I'll be putting that up. Do you guys want me to just post what he, check the website? There's all kinds of great stuff going on, how's that?
Yeah, and anything he misses, we can ask him to forward it to you in PDF form, and we'd be happy to post it on the website.
He sent it to me. So after-school programs, pickleball, there's gonna be a cool Halloween party, October 25th, I'll post all of that. Lots of Halloween stuff going on, so I'll post all the fun festivities at all of the parks, including Charles White's Loma Alta at Farnsworth.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I got it.
So will, will we post any other comments or that on the, Sam Estrada, on our website? In the meantime, the next on the agenda, Councilmember Wong, do you have something else?
Just one short thing, I just wanna thank, again, the collaboration with the library and Altadena residents for Clean Air Day. So we had a successful day, almost 100 people showed up, we did some great demonstrations, and it was a great collaboration between community members, and we had our mobility, we had an electric bike there, we had some great mobility games with the Safe Streets Committee, and you were there, Councilmember Sutherland.
I was.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you.
Is this now an annual event?
It, it should be.
Okay.
So that was a really great experience, and so thank you guys for supporting Clean Air Day.
Okay.
I just have a quick announcement. The Pasadena Unified School District Board of Education will hold a community forum to hear from stakeholders, holders about middle and high school consolidations on Thursday, October 17th. The community forum will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the auditorium of Pasadena High School, located at 2925 East Sierra Madre Boulevard. The Board of Education is considering options to consolidate middle and high schools next year, as a, as a, the district adjusts to demographic changes and the resulting economic impact on public school funding. And this is gonna be held at Pasadena High School in the auditorium on Thursday, October the 17th, at 5:00 PM.
I can add to this one. I can add to that. There's going to be a second one of those meetings for the side of Altadena, you know, because it's all the way over on Pasadena's side. Yeah, but we don't know yet, we're, they're working it out.
Just know the second one. Plus, also, too, the event is gonna be moderated by the League of Women Voters.
Right.
And it is a public forum with questions, but the questions will be accepted in written form, and the League of Women Voters will be asking the panel of judges by reading the cards, just so that, just so people are aware of the format. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
She did.
Aye?
Second, okay.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? So adjourned.